Good afternoon. We've reached our convening time at two P M. I will call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Present.
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 Here. Chair recognizes a quorum. The notice of this meeting was properly posted on October the eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. At this point, we will be prepared for the pledge of allegiance. If trustee Griffin would please do the honor. At this time, we will move into citizen participation. I will present the speakers in the order they were handed to me. Reminder that each speaker is allotted three minutes. First, Mr. Johnston, please.
Afternoon, everyone. I wanted to read an email that I sent to somebody either in a state or federal agency. I have recently pulled records and one of the things that's been one of my biggest concerns is that are we reporting the amount of employees that we have accurately? I've gone through my record requests, and I'd like to thank the DA's office. They've been awesome, by the way, on this. I have gone through my record request about the employees at the jail at Oklahoma County and found an obvious red flag or two. I have attached the main documents dumped from the DA office. But I also isolated two pages with the forty-four names that have no job title. Mr. Kimray did correct me on that one and that they are reserved folks, if I'm correct. So according to the count, the jail has roughly three hundred and thirty-five employees altogether. That conflicts with the August twenty-seventh reporting of two hundred and eighty-eight employees. Now, I know that this is October, but this is a dramatic jump of forty-seven employees from late August to today. At least that was what was reported. Keep in mind that there are always people quitting monthly. These addition of forty-seven people are on the list with a job title. There was no employee count in September's meeting. This is the, in fact, the CEO, Mr. Timmons was fired, the former CEO. And there was no presentation. And no reason was given to the public still as to why he was fired. I will provide the recording of the jail trust and send him several documents, the agenda and the slideshow. So essentially, in one month, an addition of forty-seven people. But the largest red flag is that we have roughly a hundred and sixty-seven people on shift daily. Now, I know the numbers kind of move around, so I was just doing simple math, right? Two twelve-hour shifts, if I'm correct, we're still doing twelve-hour shifts. How do we only have sixty-eight people walking the floors? If we've got all of these employees, and I counted them, I saw all their names. Now, there were no headcount, I don't know, but I was provided a list of all of these people. How are we sixty-eight people? And it said, this is why I said a few weeks ago why Mr. Cummings and myself met you at the State Capitol. I'm deeply concerned that there is potential fudging of some numbers. If you read the news, there's quite a few people, particularly somebody who we helped escort out the door, who was creating ghost employees as well. This goes back to, once again, we've missed quorum quite a few times, staffing issues, people beaten into a coma, another guy that was beaten and then released back in a hospital. And then the lovebirds, the guy who pretended to be a lawyer. Tell me how this is a building. I'm still waiting for somebody to logically intelligibly tell me that all of these issues, which are the majority of the issues we get giga on on health department reports, are somehow brick and mortar. How is a building?
Your time is expiring.
How is a building allowing all of this stuff to happen? We need new management. It's time to dissolve yourselves.
Our next speaker is Mr. Cummings.
Well, hello, everybody, and I'm happy to be back. Now that Ryan Walters is gone, I can focus on all of you all in the jail all over again. So we're six years into this now, six, six years from the original group, which was a couple of debutantes, a couple of has-been politicians, a couple of lawyers that made up the entire deal. And we're in the same place. You've still got beatings going on. You've got people getting fired for assaulting people, which is, which is nice. I'm actually happy to hear that. So from the law of incremental improvements, I'm still really not seeing it. I'm not seeing the jail countdown. I had this interaction with Jason Lowe the other day, and I thought, hey, he's trying to get me thrown in jail, which would be the best thing ever. And I got ahold of a friend of mine that makes documentaries. And I said, hey, in case this asshole gets me thrown in jail, can I get the actual cellphone burner footage from there and we can make our own documentary from inside the jail? And I can make money off the jail for my six years' worth of work that I put in here. And so I went through the whole thing. Let me, let me read you the treatment on this. The treatment's something you send a production company, so they, they literally get an idea of what you're trying to do. So it would be called incarcer action, like instead of incarceration, incarcer action inside the jail. And so Sean Cummings, me, method acting stint in the Oklahoma County Jail is proving dangerously educational. His inner circle is a master class in character study. There's a philosophical meth cook, a man who only speaks in wrestling promotions, and the toilet paper tin, who's the resident bleak economist. The food is always beige and it haunts you on the way in and it haunts you on the way out. The floors have a sticky patina, which is that color that looks like it's been stained, just so you know. And the guards view his actor's journey with profound and weary disdain. So it goes on for a couple more paragraphs. But the reason I say this, this is all the stuff we complained about from day one. It is nice that you got some paint up and it's nice that you got some stuff done. But why has nobody done a study on putting elevators on the outside of that building still? If the Parthenon in Greece can put elevators on the outside of the building, we might be able to do it here. So your whole new crew, I think you're the fourth one, right? Aren't you guys the fourth crew in six years of the jail trust or jail lack of trust, whatever you want to call it? Who is going to agree to look at elevators on the outside of the building? And last but not least, so if somebody makes bond but yet doesn't check out for two days, are we paying rent? Is the city of Oklahoma City or whoever put them in there paying rent for those two days for the inability to get them out of jail? And who is legally liable since they have bonded out? Because I don't want to pay for this yet. All right. Thanks, Buck.
Thank you. Ms. Poplin.
Good afternoon. I'm here today on behalf of Antonio Hendrix's family. His mother could not be here today because she's in training to learn, her and his father are in training to learn how to assist him once he is released. And if you don't remember who Antonio Hendrix is, he's the young man that was beat. And he was in a coma, he was on life support. They caused a brain bleed. He had to have brain surgery and now he is permanently paralyzed on the right side. So this is directly from his mother. It says, Ms. Long, mother of Antonio Hendrix, am truly disappointed in the actions of the jail trust. My son may never walk or talk again due to the negligence of the awful jail and its employees. There's no excuse for what happens in this jail or the back, the lack of accountability for who runs this place. My baby is eighteen years old. His life has changed drastically. Antonio finished school as an early graduate and hopefully he will be able to walk again, to walk across the stage in May to receive his diploma. I will find out who done this to my son and that individual or individuals will pay criminally and civilly, just as the jail trust committee. Then maybe someone will do what needs to be done to protect other inmates in this horrific jail. Again, I regret for not being able to attend. My son comes first and trust me, this won't be the last time you hearing mine or my son's name, because I will fight to the end. Signed, the mother of Antonio Hendrix. And I just, I'm dumbfounded because he was beaten like that and his bond was paid the same day he was booked in, but yet he wasn't released until the next day. But he's released out of the jail. Then they call for IMSA. What the hell is really truly going on over there? Have any of y'all been to see Antonio Hendrix? This boy is only eighteen. And he may never walk again. He can't even talk. They're just now getting him to where he can swallow food. He's lost nearly thirty pounds since this happened. And then another, another inmate got beat just last week the same way.
Time is expired.
And got released, and then he got, got to go get on IMSA. This needs to stop. And people that are being slimy, like untrust senior, senior and junior and Brandy Garner.
Time is expired.
They need to quit.
Thank you. Ms. Stanton.
It seems like every time I come here, I feel like I'm just beating a dead horse with a stick because some of you listen and some of you don't. Some pay attention or you look at your pads of paper. I fought the fight for a year and a half for my son to get answers. That's all I've ever asked for, to go deeper into the investigation. I finally talked to the new CEO. He's going to meet with me tomorrow. Maybe we'll find something out, maybe we won't. But here we are again, two more young men. Mr. Scobie, you said, if it doesn't get better, I'm going to push that we dissolve. Well, are we going to do this or are we not? I deserve, I deserve closure.
Let me stop right here. Hold on, no, no, hold on, because I, I saw in the commissioner meeting that a commissioner spoke, so there is nothing illegal about somebody saying something that is around here.
I didn't say it was illegal.
No, 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 just listen to me right now. And your timer, your timer is going to stop. So here it is. I, I want to put, go on record. You can't shut me up.
You're in my time.
You can't shut me up.
Decorum, please.
I encourage anyone, anyone that watches this podcast, if you have a loved one, you message me, deborahstantham39@gmail.com. Tell me the county, the people you're up against. I will help you fight the fight.
I'm going to speak right now, quorum, I apologize. But here it is. Many sit, stand right there and they look at us and they say, nobody will ever say anything. So then when I say something, then there's a problem. One thing that I'm going to say, as it relates to disbanding this jail trust, all of us can vote right now to say we want to disband, and by law, you cannot disband with the people that are here, by law. Everyone can go research that. You cannot do it.
We'll move, we'll move to our final speaker, Mr. Falk.
So here we are again. It's, it's actually hard to even speak after hearing what Jody said. It's hard to speak after hearing what Deborah said. We, we have people still dying in that jail. We're now, you know, able to say, to our knowledge, no one has died in three months, to our knowledge. But now we know, and, and do you know how Jody found out about this? She was tending to the memorial garden out front and the mother happened to come by. That means for every time that someone reaches out, there might be ten more, there might be twenty more, there might be fifty more. How do we know how many people are not conveniently booked out of the jail, sent to the hospital to either be paralyzed or to die? So do we trust the numbers? No, no, we don't. Because randomly, we find out horrible things and from people contacting us. Now, this has been an experiment. I'm going to give you guys, I feel like I complain about everything. I'm going to give you guys credit. There have been some good changes in that jail. But there are certain things that will never be fixed, especially under a jail trust. We will never get the numbers up on the employment. Right now, we have three prisons reopening in Oklahoma that are paying double what they pay here. We have ICE giving fifty thousand dollar bonuses. You're not going to have enough people to keep an eye on and safely oversee that jail. The only way that will happen is to give it back to the sheriff. And we're in this weird catch-22. No, we don't want to give it to the sheriff until the jail is in better shape. Well, you've had five years. The jail is not in better shape. People are still dying. And the catch-22 is it won't get better until it's handed over to the sheriff, until we can plug in more employees, until people can take care of people who are qualified. And again, that's not a complaint against all of the people working in that jail. They're overworked. They're working twelve to fourteen hours a day, some of them. So we'll never have enough guards. We'll just never have enough guards. Homelessness is rising. We have thirteen hundred evictions every month in Oklahoma County. We're in bad shape. We need to refocus on lowering the numbers in that jail. If you don't have enough employees to do the job, then lessen the number of people that you have oversight of. Do the right thing and then hand this back over to the sheriff and let's make this jail work. And I know you all want to do that. I know in your hearts you want to do the right thing.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you for all who presented public comment today. At this point, we will move into the business section of our agenda. The first item is discussion and approval of the meeting minutes from September fifteenth. What is the pleasure of my colleagues on the trust? There has been a motion and a second. At this point, please call the roll. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. By motion of six-zero, the minutes are approved. At this point, we have item number two is the filing of dates and times for our two thousand and twenty-six meeting schedule. As a reminder, the publication of meetings through the public reporting system is a required entity of public bodies. And I believe if you'll see one of the attachments that is attached to that, you will see our proposed order of meetings. I will allow you to search out the, the meeting. There's the motion of approval. Is there a second? It has been seconded. Any discussion, amendments to the dates as reported? Sing nine, please call the roll. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. By vote of six-zero, the motion to approve our two thousand and twenty-six regularly scheduled meeting schedule has been approved. At this point, we're ready to move to agenda item number three, which is a report from interim jail administrator Tim Kimray.
Good afternoon, trust members. Let me just start off by saying we've, the last month or so, we've had some significant changes. I do want to introduce some, some of our new, new folks over there. Our new CFO is Ms. Stevie Hampton. Our new business manager is, is Kim Bieber and our acting health services. There she is at the back, Sarah Lacy. So want to welcome them to, to our team and, and we have confidence that they will do us a great job. Our operational update, we're going to go over some critical issues here, our inmate transportation, our academy as far as our numbers go, our infrastructure projects, technology update and our resident statistics. So the transportation fleet's been questioning some issues over the last two, three months. One thing we wanted to do was to get that addressed. We have secured funding and purchased three brand-new transportation vans. We have two new vans that are currently on site. The third one will, should be here by Friday or, or Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday of next, of next week. That will give us a total of four vans. That will significantly enhance our, our fleet and our transportation operations. Okay, as far as our department corrections folks, our J and S folks, we did meet with the director of the population, the population director for Lexington Assessment and Receiving Center, and we come up with an agreement that starting November the second, we will be able to transport a total of thirty-six from the jail down to Lexington. And it was originally scheduled to do on Mondays, we'd be doing women over to Maple Basset. That has changed. We're going to be doing that on Tuesday also. So we'll be doing a run on Tuesday over to Maple Basset and one down to Lexington on Tuesday. Our goal is to obviously reduce the sentence population, get it at least down under a hundred, certainly by the start of, of the next year. So we're pretty excited about, about this. Judge Strong had some, we met with Judge Strong and her staff last week, had some questions about the whole problem. They was having a problem between the court and the bondsman's coming over and doing the whole ankle placement thing. We met with Judge Strong and we come up with some changes that will expedite things for both the bondsman, for DOC and for us. So I think we've got that worked out also. We've also contracted for temporary total medical personnel staffing. They'll be sending us some folks over to upgrade and enhance our medical because we're drastically down as far as personnel in that area. They've provided us about six people so far. We've got ongoing interviews this week, and so we're looking to get more probably the first of, of next week. And that's, they've already made a huge difference by the ones that they've sent over, so. And again, our new chief financial officer is Stevie Hampton. You can kind of see her, a little bit of her bio there. She comes over from OSBI and she worked previously at, at DPS. We've had some pretty lengthy meetings about finances and, and what we're going to do to get those straightened out. Our detention officer academy, we have thirteen cadets will be graduating tomorrow, ten o'clock. Everyone is invited to attend. We started with twenty-three, lost about ten people. That's a little bit more than we were wanting to do, but we're excited for them to get graduated and hit the floors come Monday. Some little things that we've done, just trying to save some money here and there. We purchased new trays. We were spending over six thousand dollars a month in styrofoam trays. We have eliminated that for a couple of our floors and that's going to save us about six thousand dollars a month. That's seventy-two thousand dollars a year that will save us by purchasing these. And of course, just cosmetic things, we're, we're looking to really, really clean up, sanitize and make our place look a little bit more professional, a little bit more pleasing to the eye for both the staff and the inmates. And this, this is an example of something that we've done so far. Our classroom, we had them go in and totally renovate the classroom. We've added just some, again, some cosmetic things, painted it and cleaned everything up, put in some dry erase boards and, and got some new equipment for that. So it'd just be a little bit better atmosphere for our inmates that are coming to our, our programs. We're still testing our, through integrity communications, our LDS program, which is basically is a system that monitors heart rate and breath rates inside the cells. This gives us a little bit more eyes on, so to speak, as far as the health and condition of our, of our folks. We, there's forty-three radars so far installed. They're all on thirteenth floor and like I said, we still have testing in progress. Our information technology, as far as the maintenance, the ARPA project, it's passed. We went through Friday full certification, make sure all the requirements on that are met. We have replaced all the cell doors and, and port modifications, so we don't have to open those cells. We can do the food through the, through those ports, which was an officer and a safety concern that we had. As far as our technology, we have a control network upgrade that we're looking at. Some of the systems over there are really getting worn and getting old and we're going to have to do something pretty quick to some of that stuff. Also, our computers, our laptops, desktops, things like that are also getting pretty, pretty up in age and those are going to have to also be addressed. Jail tracker, we, we currently have a two-year contract, it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for service and maintenance. There are currently three thousand two hundred and sixty-two accounts that's used by everyone from the DA's office to Oklahoma City to other law enforcement agencies. Some of the future changes that we're looking at, we want to probably come up with a little bit better system that'll do a little bit more. So we're looking at some things that may replace jail tracker in, in the future. And we had one of those in last week and did a demo and we, we really like that system and, but we're, we're going to continue to look for that. Investigation division, we got four active investigations over the last thirty days or so. We filed ten charges. We have about fourteen cases that are still open pending, and we were able to close ten of those cases. The breakdown in charges, you see, most of them were possession of controlled substance inside of the jail facility and assault and battery on detention staff. We had two of those. Okay, our medical division, again, we have the RFP that's been posted, the contract, like I mentioned before, with total medical. We have two RNs, one CMA and two LPNs and four-plus interviews, interviews this week. So we're going to get that built up to, so, so that we don't have the kind of issues we've had in the past. We have gone out and purchased two new medical stretcher beds for medical. Did an inspection up there when I first come on board and, and saw that we didn't, I did not think that we had the right equipment up there for the inmates, and so we purchased those. We also purchased new mattresses for our pregnant females and the elderly folks. It's a little bit more, a little bit more comfortable. So we got those in the other day and I think those have been distributed. As far as our medical treatment for September, you can see we had thirty-four emergency room visits. There were sixteen of our inmates, been a total of fifty-nine days in the hospital, and we had sixty-three that were off-site referrals that we sent out. Okay, population, pleased to say that our numbers have actually gone down quite a bit over the last couple of months. We were over seventeen hundred, and now we're down to fifteen forty-six. We still have the hundred and ninety-five at JNS's, but start next week, that will begin to go down. So we're kind of pleased with the numbers going down. And of course, our population statistics, you see that the average population age is around thirty-six years old. Most of the inmates over there are obviously male, and it's broke down as to far as the backgrounds percentage of race. Our population charges, we have a hundred and fifty-one that are in jail for murder. We have sixteen hundred and forty-four criminal felonies and nine hundred and ninety-two criminal misdemeanors, the charges of our people. And of course, our top charge is possession of CDS, which is at twenty-one percent, followed by our firearm by felon. Arresting agencies, obviously Oklahoma City Police Department is still leading the pack, followed by Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office, Admin PD, Midwest City, and Dale City. Our special housing, we have two sixty-eight that's in protective custody, and we have over three hundred, three hundred and seventeen that are in mental health observation. Our resident welfare programs, pleased to say that we just had a graduation out of the job readiness program, and we graduated thirteen, I believe, for that. So we're excited about that. Our GED classes are going very, very well. So our programs have increased. I will say that our program coordinator, Lieutenant Ross, had to have emergency surgery on Monday morning, and is going to be out for the rest of the week. So we're hurting a little bit on staffing for that, but you can see the ones that we currently have going. And I have about four also that have applied to come in and do some work, some programs they'd like to have inside the jail, and I'm going to meet with those individually and see if we can accommodate them. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Questions for the administrator?
May I make a couple of comments?
Of course, Mr. Trooman.
Back to the transportation issue, and what we have learned in the video conference that we had with DOC is that we will be allocated, for lack of a better term, thirty-five percent of the received inmates on a weekly basis will be us, Oklahoma County Detention Center. And we also know, and this is something I learned and I think is worth sharing, that when you look at a hundred, it was a hundred and ninety-three, Tim, that are in there now that are at JNC, not all of those are eligible. If there are some federal charges, other charges, we couldn't go to zero if we wanted to for reasons that are not under our control. I think that's mentionable.
Yeah, that's, and that's a good point. We will never, ever get to zero, but we can, I'd like to get that to at least out of the triple digits and get that for an acceptable rate.
Other questions, comments? Pastor Scobie?
So can you just release detainees just arbitrarily? You just say, I'm going to release them so I can get my numbers down, maybe similar to that. So to get my numbers down in the jail, the detainees, the population?
No.
Okay. So is the onus on you as the interim jail administrator? Is it on you for those numbers to decrease?
Not individually. We don't have, obviously, we don't have control of who's being brought in. I mean, those numbers are obviously going to fluctuate. We do have a little bit of control as far as how fast we can get them out of there.
No, 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 just...
No, I can't just arbitrarily say, hey, we're going to take a hundred people and...
Yeah, I know you can't.
Well, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood.
That was a rhetorical question, but I was, yeah.
Yeah, no.
So I guess I'm going to ask one more time. Can you arbitrarily just release people?
No, sir.
Okay. If you did, what do you think's going to happen to you? If you say, I'm going to release thirty people, and you did it, what's going to probably happen?
Probably be fired in about fifteen minutes.
Fired, and I think maybe Sheriff Tommy Johnson and his crew would probably come and arrest you.
Well, they'd have to catch me first. I'm LEDT instructor myself, so...
So that can't, that can't happen. Yeah. And really, then, obviously, if you can't, then we can't be the long arm of the law as a trust to come reach in and say, we're going to arbitrarily come over. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. So my, my other question is not rhetorical. Do we have, where are we with the contract with Oklahoma City PD?
I contacted Deputy Chief Butler the other day and just reached out to her, kind of good faith gesture, and gave her some numbers, and she said she was going to take that back to the chief and talk to him. She did, didn't really reply to that, but she did reply. She, they requested some additional information, numbers, and we collated that, and we sent those back over to her.
So we don't have a contract in place, really my question. And then, when will the contract that we do have in place, when will that, in essence, expire?
It's already expired.
So are we getting paid from Oklahoma?
No, sir.
Okay. So right now, we're not getting paid. And when, when did that contract expire?
It's been probably about three, four months ago, I think.
Three or four months.
It would have been June thirty.
Okay, June thirtieth. So since July first, we haven't been paid by Oklahoma City Police Department?
That's correct.
For their arrestees coming as detainees?
That's correct.
So which this would not, you are not here, but best of your knowledge, the last time we went through this, it went over about a year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Were we paid in retro every single dime that it would have been if we would just nailed the contract down?
I don't know.
No, we were not. I mean, I don't even know if we were paid half the amount of money. So I say that to encourage us to get a contract in place, and it is not your fault for us to get a contract in place because now we've gone four months, and the last time we went twelve plus, they didn't pay us all the money. I'm not blaming them. We just had to negotiate it down. So I'm afraid that even right now, if we entered into a contract with them, they would negotiate that down, and we would never get the full amount of money. So we're losing money.
Well, that's, that's kind of their...
And money we could use.
Oh, absolutely. That's, that's kind of their MO is just keep kicking it, kicking it, kick it until we get to the end, and eventually choke somebody in.
So somewhere in the federal government right now, we have, we have a quandary where to come to, day after tomorrow, quote unquote, people won't be getting SNAP benefits because two sides are fighting. It's going to cost a whole bunch of people a whole bunch of money. So in essence, we have two sides fighting, Oklahoma City Police Department and us as jail, not fighting, reasonable one, but the problem is we can't come together.
Yeah, but Pastor, I think you'll agree that we made a very, very good offer the last time.
We did, but here's what I'm trying to get us to understand, that if we're already going over four months, we may not very well get the one hundred percent, and which obviously...
Probably will not. Yeah, you're right.
We cannot and will not disclose what, where those numbers are right now. We won't do that, meaning I won't do that. I have enough good sense not to do that. But what I will say, the little small gap that we are from one another, we need to put it into place because we're going to lose much more than that. I think right now it is some, it's, it's a little macho machismo, if you will, and a little pride, and people are digging their heels into the concrete, but we, we really need to put that in place because we're going to lose. We're stepping over, we're stepping over dollars to reach pennies. Okay, that's all. I'm not fussing at you. I'm just trying to get us to understand.
Other questions or comments?
Fussed already. And then already right now, the last thing I've got to say, already right now, by us not getting the contract in place coupled with other things, so there's folks that don't trust the trust.
I read that article too.
Yeah, so, but what, but I'm just saying, I'd say people don't trust the trust. So I don't know, when I see things written, unless I see a news story with it coming out of somebody's mouth, then I don't know if to believe it or not. But even now with AI, it could just be that too. But my point is, there are people that don't trust the trust, and that brings dissension within the trust. And I think the best thing probably would be, when people don't trust the trust, and they're not residents of Oklahoma County, just residents, residents, and they're actually maybe employed by the county of Oklahoma, then it probably need to be quiet because they're causing dissension. We're all on the same playing field. I feel so much better now.
Trustee Griffin?
I'm here for you, Pastor. You can all you want to.
I'm with.
Yes, ma'am.
As part of that negotiation, I know one of the terms of the points of contention are the timeline of release for misdemeanors only.
Mm-hmm, right.
And have you assigned, kind of studying that issue to anybody on the leadership team? So can we next month maybe have a report on that?
Yes, absolutely.
Because there was a lot of data that needed to be uncovered on that particular issue. It's not just a timeline. So I'd like to see that. And then the other quick question, don't forget on the demographics, homeless count, make sure it's in there.
The reason I didn't put it in there, and let me, let me explain that a little bit. A lot of people that come into the jail, that's just a question that we ask. Those are not what I call true numbers. A lot of people come into the jail and they'll just say, I'm homeless, okay, whether they are or whether they're not. So I'm not for sure exactly how correct that is. I would say that's at least off twenty-five percent. So we're going to maybe work on that, figure out how we can get a better answer from those people that are coming in. Are they truly homeless, or is that just what they're giving us?
Okay.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I'll make sure it's in there.
You can alter the question, ask follow-ups, don't leave it out.
Yeah, there's... Yes, so coming from that once operating homeless assistance nonprofit, there are absolutely follow-up questions that will lead you down to whether they're couch homeless or are they truly homeless, or are they temporarily homeless? I mean, there's, there's a lot of different situations there that these individuals are probably going through that we can track.
I'll review the paperwork that we're...
Just one quick thing, November one, a lot of laws change.
Yes, DUI.
I envision that our population will start increasing dramatically. Is there, will you be tracking that? And if not, can we?
I brought that up this morning at our meeting. I told them about the new law that goes into effect, the DUI, ten days in the jail. I explained that to them, how it would affect our operations, and we need to be prepared for that. So they are looking at that on how we can be able to accommodate it.
Perfect. Thank you.
One, one, one last thing. We, there is a, we are, Saturday, there's, I believe, a concert in town. I sent some information, but we have brought in extra staff for Saturday just in case there's an influx of inmates, both in receiving and medical to be able to, to handle that. So we've got our cert team that's going to be on standby.
What concert is in town?
NBA Youngboy.
Okay, well, may I ask you, have we done that for other concerts that are in town? What concert?
I can't tell you exactly the names. I know we've been in for NBA.
I've never heard a jail administrator over that left and in my three years say that we're bringing in more staff because a concert is in town. Never.
Well, I'm simply going to make sure we got enough staff there in case there's a situation.
So are we going to do that with all the rest of the concerts?
You better believe it, as long as I'm over there.
So we have one coming up, I believe, on the fourteenth or fifteenth, okay? It's a Christian concert. So I, I believe that we need to have the same type of staff in for that. But I do know that these other concerts, we didn't do it.
I don't know what they done in the past, Pastor. I know what I'm doing.
Has there been a concert since you, since you've been here?
No, sir. Well, no, the championship was before, but I think we brought people in.
I love you. I am not just talking today just to talk. I don't talk all the time, but when stuff, when stuff like this comes out... Okay, there was this guy named NBA Youngboy. I'd never heard of him until about a week or so ago.
Me neither.
Okay. It is probably going to be about seventy-five percent African Americans at that concert. Well, I know, I know you wouldn't say it. I'm going to say it. So all the other concerts, we have not had extra staff come in.
There's been many times, I know, not, not in my position, but I know that we've had, matter of fact, I've come in myself and worked, you know, certain events and stuff. It's been, but I know where you're going with that.
No, I'm not just going there, brother.
Okay, you're there.
I'm not, I'm there.
Okay, you're there.
And I'm not afraid to be there because this is, this is overt.
I don't think it's overt. I think it's, I think it's being proactive and making sure that, I disagree with.
We didn't do it, we didn't do it when, we didn't do it when that Canadian kid was here.
Who? Decorum, please.
Okay, well, then I'm, then I'm talking to the jail administrator, asking, I know you were not here, but you're still in the position of interim. And when that Canadian kid was here, you know, y'all know who I'm talking about. You know what I'm talking about.
I'm not a country and western guy.
No, 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 no. He's, he's not, he's not a country and western guy. Anyway, he had two nights. It was the largest concert in the history of Oklahoma City, and we didn't bring in extra staff for that.
We will be going into the future.
So you, so every, so every time we have a major concert, we're going to...
If there's an influx in, in population and people that come into the metro area, we need to have resources to be able to accommodate for whatever reason.
Last question, two.
Yes, sir.
Did we do it for the NBA finals?
Yes, we did.
Okay, good, good.
And if you remember, five minutes after that game was over, I think we had a shooting.
Oh, I know we did.
Okay.
Yeah, and they were not arrested. I mean, it was unfortunate. It was horrible, but there was two people, I believe, in that car. Okay, so the Christian concert is coming up, and there are going to be people, be people from all over the United States that Craig Rochelle and his team are bringing in. It's going to be very large. It's the fourteenth or fifteenth. You can, you can look on the website. I think we need it.
Okay.
Any other questions from my colleagues on the trust? Comment, please.
I, since I've been on the trust and I'm the lowest in time in grade, so to speak, what happened when, with no preparation because no knowledge, when a hundred people were arrested for racing, what happened to the jail when there was no preparation for?
We were inundated with, obviously, individuals.
I personally will commend you for doing what you're doing. It's proactive, and I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
The, the chair sees that there has been a motion.
Motion to receive report.
Is there a second?
Second.
The move and seconded and follow-up conversations, absent those that the clerk would please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 By vote of six zero, the motion to accept has passed. Mr. Kimery, you are listed as the presenter on the financial statements, income statements and financial statements.
I'm going to allow. I know that she's getting a fire hose effect from us, but I'm going to ask Stevie to come up here. That's okay? Let her get her feet wet. Uh, just would ask that, be reminded she's been here just a little over a week, so. Go try to go easy.
Welcome, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Stevie Hampton. As you said, I'm the new CFO for just over a week now. Um, however, I have spent the last 20 years working in accounting roles for two state law enforcement agencies. For at least 15 of those years, uh, I was privileged to work with Ken Beaver, who's our business manager. We make a great team. And the two, two of us, along with the rest of the team members are dedicated to making necessary changes. And we are making significant improvements. And we are excited to make positive impact for this agency and ready to step in and, and get to work. With that said, report of our September 2025 expenses. Actual expenses were 3.548835 million and budgeted 3.680924. We did have a, a positive variance of 132,089 dollars. We've got different sources of revenue, but we only wanted to, um, I guess, make a note of those that were over $5,000. We have several that are just, you know, a thousand dollars or something like that, and the report would be, you know, way too long. So we've condensed it to, to show just the ones that are significant differences. Butane off-site medical care and pharmacy, um, it is above, um, sorry, it's below what was, um, budgeted. And, uh, full-time salaries and wages, uh, were again, I'm sorry. Um, a positive difference of 156,376. Our professional services other, um, we only budgeted 26,000, yet we spent 220,389. That comes from the personnel shortage that we have for DOs and having to outsource for professional services to come in and do the required checks and things like that. For revenue, um, actual revenue, 3,268,206, budgeted to 3,237,137. Uh, variance of 31,069 dollars. The most notable variances were prisoner boarding for the state. We budgeted 115,000, actual revenue was 162,702. Uh, the commissary was budgeted at 45,000, actual revenue was 104,804. Um, however, prisoner boarding for the city, um, we've budgeted $100,000 and, thank you, $100,000, and our actual revenue was 1322 dollars, which is reflected by the contract negotiations that are, negotiations that are still ongoing. And then just in summary, uh, we've produced a net loss of 280,630 dollars.
Does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
Questions for members of the trust? Pastor Scobie?
Hello and welcome.
Thank you.
So that, the 1320 some odd dollars or whatever are revenue? And we had projected, what was it, 100?
Budgeted 100,000.
Budgeted 100,000.
Or, or the city contracts.
So what would you, what would you guesstimate the loss in interest to be?
That's, yeah, I mentioned that the other day. That's significant.
I haven't heard nobody else say about that.
They're holding on to it until next spring or summer. That's a lot of interest that we're losing.
Lot of interest. We, we might be stepping over dollars to get to pennies.
I agree.
I don't know why nobody will pay attention to me with that. Thank you.
Other questions on the financial report? What is the pleasure of the trust?
Move to accept.
Second.
The mo, my, a motion has been made and a second has been offered to accept the financial reports. Seeing no further discussion, call the roll, please. Yes?
Yes.
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 By motion of six zero, the item advances. The next item on the list, Mr. Kimery, you are listed as the presenter, but I will, in my role as chair, give a summary of the item and then you can entertain any questions. As we needed to move this trust meeting back to later in the month and schedule a special meeting, there were bills that needed to be paid, and my role as chairman, I authorized for the payment of those invoices. And, uh, having done such, the item before you today is ratification of that decision.
Motion.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions, any discussion? Absent that, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is any reports or comments to be provided by the trust chairman or vice chairman. I will yield to, um, Ms. Griffin if she has comments. I will defer mine to a further agenda item. So we will, we will move beyond, um, agenda item number six then. And we are now on agenda item number seven. Mr. Kimery, you are the presenter. You covered this in your, in your report. Uh, this is a decision to ratify the purchase of, uh, vehicles, uh, for the purpose of the jail. Uh, Mr. Kimery, I invite you to make any comments, but I also know that trustee Holman, you were, uh, you did some individual research and supported the staff. So are there any comments you might offer?
No, I think, I think that, only to say this, I think from a dollar standpoint, we spent the dollars well. And secondly, to find these, these vehicles specifically, uh, equipped, or the, the usage that we're going to use them for in stock was a slight miracle.
So with that, what is the pleasure of the trust relative to the ratification of those purchases?
I move to approve.
There's been a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion? Absent that, please call the roll.
Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Tommy Johnson?
Yes.
Derek Scobie?
Yeah.
AJ Griffin? Jim Holman?
Yes.
Paul Foster?
Yes.
By motion of six zero, item number seven passes. Agenda item number eight.
I'm sorry. Mr. Scobie, would you hit your button for me, please, sir? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, agenda item number eight is the, um, any discussion and acceptance of, um, a donation proposed by the Arnall Foundation of a 2023 Ram Pro Master Tradesman Hyrum Van. Anything to offer, Mr. Kimery?
We, uh, we just want to say thank you, uh, to the, to the Arnall Foundation, uh, for assisting on this. This will obviously add again to our fleet and make our transportation, uh, very robust and help us to actually be able to bring the numbers down that we have in the jail.
Is there a motion on the item?
Motion to accept donation.
There has been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been offered. Is there any debate or discussion?
Mr. Holman, will you push your second button for me, please, sir? Thank you.
Sorry. Cut it off.
I'll push one button. Thank you.
And now the electronic system validates what we reported on verbally. All right, clerk, would you mind call the roll? Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
By motion of six zero, agenda item number eight passes. Agenda item number nine is the, uh, discussion and possible action to approve a letter of engagement with Hinkle and Company for the financial audit for the year ending June 2025. You might recall that, um, representatives of the company were here a couple of meetings ago to give their wrap-up on 24. So this is a customary action for this trust to, um, entertain. So is there a motion on the item? There has been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, discussions? Absent those, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
By motion of six zero, agenda item number nine passes. The annexed, uh, agenda item number 10, uh, speaks to a letter of engagement with Crawford and Associates for the presentation of financial statements. Uh, this is another, um, annual motion that is heard before the trust. What is the pleasure of the trust? I've seen a motion.
Second.
And there has been a second. Any comments, any questions? Absent that, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Abstain?
Yes.
By motion of five zero with one abstain, that item passes. The next item on the agenda is actually a item that is being, um, before us from the, from, due to a change in terminology, uh, for which our, uh, most senior staff member is addressed. That's correct, right? Isn't it the, the type change in title? Um, it was a decision of this trust some time ago that there would be purchasing authority granted to our senior officer, uh, to be made in between trust meetings so that, uh, we have the ability to conduct the business without having to convene the trust. The first item is for employment consulting and vendor contracts for services in an expenditure of no more than $5,000 per month, with all contracts to be reviewed by legal counsel. Is there any questions, discussion, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
There has been a motion to approve and a second. Any questions, discussion? Absent those, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 By motion of six zero, agenda item number 11 has passed. Now, agenda item number 12. Agenda item number 12 relates to maintenance services and again granting our jail administrator, our senior official, the ability to engage should he need to do so in order to continue the operations of the facility. This is at his discretion under that amount with review by legal counsel. Any questions or discussion, or is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Absent follow-up questions or discussions, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
By vote of six zero, agenda item number 12, um, passes. We are now ready for agenda item number 13, uh, which relates to a memorandum of understanding between the Oklahoma County Criminal Justice Authority and the Oklahoma State Bureau of Investigation for participation in a combined DNA index system offender web program. This item is requested by, uh, jail administrator Kimery, and I would like for you to give a little context on this item, please.
This is something we're required, uh, through, you know, policy and statute to provide OSBI certain, uh, information, fingerprints, things like that, viral metrics, uh, for people that are incoming into the jail. It's just a MOU so that we make sure that everybody's on the same page on how that is to be adjudicated.
I appreciate the explanation. Are there any questions? Absent the questions, uh, while I filibuster for one second when my own system reopens, um, I apologize. There we go. That wasn't me.
I just wanted to make sure. Thought it was you.
Thank you. My apologies and thank you for the patience. And we are on agenda item 13, correct. So how, there has been a motion, I see. Is there a second on the item?
Second.
And there's the second. Any follow-up discussion? Absent that, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
By motion of six zero, agenda item 13 advances. Uh, we're now ready for agenda item number 14. Uh, this item is request, is, uh, requested by Mr. Kimery. It is a jail services agreement between the Oklahoma County Criminal Justice Authority and the city of Bethany to provide detention services. Um, I will ask the question, if you don't mind, uh, mentioning, uh, with Bethany before us, what other municipalities or operating systems remain, um, not, not within contract? They're, they're the first one to stand before us for the current year. Okay, thank you for that clarification. What did?
I would like to ask.
Oh, I'm sorry, pastor.
The typical number of, uh, arrestees that become detainees from the city of Bethany? Per month?
Very few. Very few.
20 a month?
Probably not that.
Yeah.
Very, very. I don't have the exact number.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
It's not a hun.
My news.
For the record, Pastor Scobie, in our report, uh, they, the city of Bethany is not a top five, um, agency. So I can't tell you a number. I can tell you they're not top five.
And I appreciate you getting that contract in place. I really do. It's just such a small number, and we, we have to, um, we gotta swing for the fences with all of them.
So with that, what is the pleasure of the trust? Uh, other questions, other discussion, or is there a motion? I see the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Absent any questions or discussion, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 By vote of six zero, um, agenda item number 14 passes. We're now ready for agenda item number 15, which is related to a, um, which is related to a staffing agreement between the Oklahoma County Criminal Justice Authority and BIMED. Is that correct? Okay. This is the first of two sta, um, this is the first of two staffing, um, items that are on your agenda today. Um, if I might, um, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, you're initiating contracts with both so that we have the flexibility to always meet our medical needs.
Right, that's a, just a backup plan.
Correct. As you heard in the administrator's report, um, we are having to actively engage medical personnel, uh, to make sure we are meeting our needed minimums to provide care. So what is the pleasure of the trust on agenda item 15? There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any debate, any discussion? Please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
By motion of six zero, the contract is approved. Agenda item number 16 is same purpose, but this one with total medical personnel. Um, Mr. Kimery, if I might ask a question, um, both contracts are only bill as used, correct? So neither one of them has an obligation or retainer. It just gives your team the option of having pathways for personnel.
Correct. And let me make, uh, with total medical, we have the ability to hire them straight, uh, you know, if, if they come in, they're a good fit, they want to work for us. There's no cost or penalty for us. They can come and, and work straight for us, full-time.
So what is the pleasure of the trust? There is a motion, I see. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
By motion of six zero, the item passes. Agenda item number 17, um, is an item, uh, Mr. Haggy, that we will return from executive session to address, correct? Um, agenda item number 18 is a discussion and possible action to approve consulting services agreement between the Oklahoma County Criminal Justice Authority and McDaniel Consulting Group to provide jail administration consulting services. If my colleagues on the trust would allow me to present the item, um, I would like the opportunity to do so. You, you might recall, I believe it was in either the July or August trust meeting, I made a, um, a statement about the importance of us as a trust body going through a very, um, formative review of our operational stra, of our operational strategy, um, our financial modeling, uh, ways to improve our efficiency and candidly ways to deliver a report to the taxpayers of Oklahoma and our other publicly elected colleagues, um, on our operations. and our other publicly elected colleagues on our operations so that informed decisions could be made about the long-term, long-term manner in which we need to address, ranging from specific decisions we should make as a trust to improve our own efficiency to other possible models of service delivery for the state. Mr. McDaniel is an individual who has led multiple large school districts. You might be asking, would the school districts have anything to do with jails? This consulting agreement is not on, not about what happens inside our units. This is about how we are structured as a business model. This is about how we engage with the public. This is how we justify the resources that we need, and this is an analysis of best path forward. Mr. McDaniel, I would share with you, Superintendent McDaniel, next to my experience on serving on the jail trust, I think that only administering a school district is as challenging as this might be. And so, in conversations with Mr. McDaniel, knowing his expertise and following through on my commitment that we evaluate ourselves and we present a path forward that people can understand and evaluate, and that can range from whom should be our CEO and how we should recruit that position, all the way to should there be other possible models that we should consider. So, this item is to ask us to retain Mr. McDaniel and to charge him on that work. I will share with my colleagues that work will remain on a statement of work, but included in that statement, work are very specific outreach expectations to publicly elected officials, members of the county, and the general public, as well as working with Mr. Kimery and his team. That concludes my report, or my explanation. Questions?
Thank you. Statement. It seems only appropriate that Dr. McDaniel would come to the lectern and share some words. I don't know what that would be.
I, I am happy to invite Dr. McDaniel to join us at the lectern.
Greetings, Chair Buck, members of the trust. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Pastor Scobie.
We would like to hear a statement of sorts from you, and I'm sure somebody have a question.
Okay, well, I spent, as many of you know, about forty years in the world of education, and the last twenty-two of my career were as a superintendent of schools. And so, my training and my experience has been with organizational structure. It's been with culture. It's been with reporting structures and mechanisms. As you probably have followed over the years, public education has been on a roller coaster of funding for decades. And so, we always had to have the ability as a group to pivot and make decisions about efficiency. And we would measure that up against best practices, and we would move forward based upon the money that we had available to us. And so, when I retired about eighteen months ago, a group of us set out to, to decide what we were going to do as next steps in our lives. And, and one of the things that we were very attuned to was the city of Oklahoma City. We wanted to be contributors to our city. And one of the things that we believed we had as a collective skillset was how to measure things, how, how to look at organizations, how to help people see themselves, maybe from a third-party point of view. Many times when we get inside of it and we're part of it, it's hard to be objective when we look at ourselves. But when you have somebody else come in who has a skillset and a desire to help and to help make things better, our city, our detention center, whatever it is, that objective set of eyes gives some clarity. And so, part of my LLC that I started about eighteen months ago was pointed toward helping organizations become more efficient. And so, I don't like to be the guy that's sitting in front of the TV in the evenings complaining about what's going on on the news. I like to be the guy to step in and say, how can I help my, my town? How can I help other people? How can I be a part of progress? And so, that's, that's why I was interested in this. And I'm looking forward to, to working with Tim and others with the trust to see if we, we as a group, working together, can get this figured out. And really to, to measure this objectively. You know, right now on this side of it, because I have not really dug in, there's a lot to say. What's true, what's false, what's close, what's not? And I think by getting in objectively, I don't really have a dog in the hunt as far as the jail operations are concerned. But, but organizationally, I do believe all of us can get better. And so, if I can provide perspective on that, how can we get better? Then, then I'm willing to do that and would be excited to do that. If that helps.
Let me go on record to say that Dr. McDaniel and I, we certainly are friends. So, you are obviously going to have a dog in the hunt.
Right.
Maybe a dog in the fight, just depending on how you look at it. So when I first met you back, I believe, I don't know, 2018? Is that when you got to? I didn't like you and
I didn't like you.
I didn't trust you. I know you didn't. We didn't like each other. And I did, I didn't, you were going too fast, you were doing too much, I thought. But then, as I've watched you over the years, I realized that your pathway forward, it was, it was better than anything we had ever seen in the city of Oklahoma City as it relates to our, to our schools. And, you know, to watch you also lead us in a nine-hundred-and-sixty-million-dollar bond proposal that seemed ludicrous to a lot of people and that it would never pass, but you led us in that. I mean, that says a lot, and I am grateful for, for your leadership.
Thank you.
Yeah, really am. So, thank you.
Other questions, other comments from members of the trust?
Oh, I love you now. So we, and I like you.
Likewise. Thank you, Pastor.
I'm sorry.
You might talk a little bit about the rest of the team that you'll bring in.
Sure, thank you for that. So we have, my group, which is the McDaniel Consulting Group, consists of about fifteen of us from different walks of life. So we have CPAs, we have legal, we have curriculum specialists, we have leadership and organizational specialists. So, what we like to do is approach an organization and, and sit down with leadership and talk about what it is that they need, and then to tailor a program for them with the experts that we have. So we have research specialists who, what he does, he looks at best practices. So, I'll give you a school example. We have been working with Tulsa Public Schools for several weeks, and, and we're really doing a review and an analysis of their bond department. So, Jason Brown, who worked with me for years as my deputy sous, he is the lead for our research. So he and the Tulsa Public Schools example, he would find similarly situated public school districts across the country. And he would do an in-depth analysis, or did an in-depth analysis of each district. And then, from that, we would come up with a set of best practices or standards. On the other side, we have a team who would look at Tulsa Public Schools' operations, real-time. Again, third-party outside looking, many times, most times is different than when we self-evaluate. And so, that team would give us a real-time, here's how the operations look. Here's what the structure looks like. Here's the reporting mechanism. Here's the communication, internal, external. We would then take the real-time evaluation. We would measure it up against the best practices that we have, that we've come up with from across the country in similarly situated public school districts. And we do what we call a gap analysis. Many of you are familiar with that. Here's where you are, here's where you need to be to be maximally efficient. And here would be what we would call either considerations or recommendations. And so, that's how we would approach this. It's not in my wheelhouse to come in and tell Tim or anybody else how you ought to run your jail. It is organizational, ten-thousand-foot view, processes. Do your processes and procedures match up with your policies? Do you have an efficient and effective way to recruit and retain? So things like that would be important from an organizational standpoint, that we would then come back to this group. And by the way, I don't know because I haven't asked, and honestly, it's part of how we operate, so I probably won't ask. But, we, we want to get people involved in our study beyond an employee, beyond a trust member. We want to talk to inmates, we want to talk to the families of those who are in jail. We want to talk to the community at large. And in that way, we can put together a more holistic view of what's really happening. And so that would be a part of the plan. But, yeah, we've got a lot of folks who, who want to help, and most of them live in Oklahoma City. So we like that because we consider this our town, and rather than criticizing and calling people to task, although that's part of it too, we want to see how we can help. And so that's what's appealing to me.
Pastor.
Just, I think this is really for low-level thinkers who would say, what in the world are you doing coming in trying to give some type of consulting, whatever, to the jail? And you've never been a part of that. But as my mind goes different places, I think about one particular lady who was, I believe, a pres-, president, president of Southwestern Bay, somewhere, some AT&amp;Ts. Well, Mark Cuban, he watched her for some years, and then he recruited her to come and be the president of basketball operations for the Dallas Mavericks. She knew nothing about the NBA nor basketball, but she was over, she was able to come and change that culture. And I have seen CEOs, not personally, just from afar, CEOs move from one organization to another all over this world. And I have seen that for really the past thirty-five years of my real adult life. So again, for low-level thinkers who would think you, you cannot make a change, then I would venture to say that that is, that is incorrect. But then the last thing, because it's public record, you know, it's been public record. Public record shows how much you made in the position of superintendent.
Okay.
Public record, you know, say there was three-hundred-plus thousand dollars. So, you know, coming in and doing something like this, the only people I know that do things like that are ministers and pastors that come. They don't make a lot of money. So, that, that, that kind of causes a little confusion of why you would do it.
Why I would come and, and work?
Are you speaking to a contract amount?
No, no, we're not talking about that. No, we're just, he's not making three-hundred and something.
No, so, so fair question.
And it'll be public, obviously, it's something.
Yeah, I, I have always had a heart for just helping people. As I was working in the public sector, I spent seventeen years of my life as a volunteer in the prison system. So I've been to many of our county facilities. I've been to minimum, maximum facilities as a part of my personal life and didn't make a dime. Because I, you know, I, I just feel very strongly that we are all here to, to help in some form or fashion. We have a job, but we also have a calling. And sometimes it's the same thing, sometimes it's not. And so in my life, I have always felt a need, a desire to use the gifts that I have, the skills that I have accumulated over time, to give it back somehow. And because I live in Oklahoma City, and because this is an issue that seems to recur, I wanted to use what I could. Part of it's my passion, part of it is, just in my life, I've been a problem solver. And I have like-minded people who work with me, and we think we can come in and, and help somehow. I'm not sure what that's going to look like yet, but we think we can help.
Any other questions from members of the trust? Second. It's been moved and seconded. One thing I might add, in, in public disclosure, passed through the amount of the contract on this is a seventy-eight thousand dollar initial proposal on statement of work, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any further debate or discussion? Absent that, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 By vote of six zero, the agenda item passes. Superintendent McDaniel, I know that members of the trust look forward to working for you. I hope, Mr. Kimery, that your team is ready to engage, and those members of the public that want to engage will be involved as well. Thank you for that. There will be a public report back at the end of the process. Correct. The next agenda item for consideration, I believe we had one item that was listed out of order on the agenda. That's agenda item number twenty-one. I am going to go to that item. It is a seventy-two thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar replacement of desktop and laptop computers. That was not an executive session item, was it? Okay. So at this point, I'd like to entertain agenda item number twenty-one. That was requested by Mr. C. Do you have any context to add, Mr. Kimery?
Just what I said previously is, you know, it's just getting infrastructure, this getting old computers, technologies. They, they need to be replaced for us to be able to, you know, do what we need to do and certainly not slow our operations down.
What is the pleasure of the trust?
Motion.
There has been a motion. Is there a second? Any debate, any discussion? Absent that, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
By motion of six zero, the item passes. We're now going to move up to agenda item number nineteen. My apology?
I apologize for interrupting. It did not catch Mr. Foster's vote, so I will go back and correct that.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and my apologies for moving through that quickly. Agenda item number nineteen was a report from the Citizens Advisory Board. I don't believe Ms. Singelke was able to make it over. She sent me a report. I will read that very briefly. It is that with Mr. Steele's resignation, they are in the process of re-convening. Ms. Singelke was elected chair, vice-chair, Ms. Furlan Kearns. They have a special meeting called at November third at 11:00 a.m. My assumption is that meeting is here in this room. And that concludes Ms. Singelke's report. Since I read that into the record, is it necessary that be accepted? Or is my counsel says I can move on? So, agenda item number twenty is to remind that our next regularly scheduled meeting is in two short weeks, Monday, November the tenth. A reminder, that is the day before the Veterans Holiday. And that has been posted. At this point, counsel has requested an executive session, so I will entertain a motion for recess.
Second.
There's been a motion and a, is there a second? There's been a motion and a second to recess to executive session. Please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 Is it appropriate to entertain a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the row please. Yes.
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 We have reconvened to regular session at this point. There are two action items that I anticipate. Is there a motion to address agenda item number 27 as it relates to item 17?
I move that we approve the contract.
You have heard the motion. Is there a second? With that, please call the row. Yes.